First, I'd like for everybody to silence your cell phones in a good place. And then I'd like for us all to pledge allegiance to our national flag, please.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to your Republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Now, for some of you that saw me change the flag from there to there, it's always on the right of the presentable, of the person presentable. I learned that at Hartley. I got embarrassed. All of us know Senator Jeff Merkley. Most agents know that he grew up, son of a millwright in the timber industry over at Roseburg and lived up to, was it Clackamas County? Monomo County? And he served in the House, the state representative, and he also served as an intern to Senator Mark Hatfield. And at a later date, I think it was 2009, he was elected to the US Senate in the same position that Mark Hatfield. And I'd like to hand the mic over to Senator Jeff Merkley. Welcome very much.
Thank you very much, Commissioner, and thank you, everybody, for turning out today. Great, great to have this kind of crowd. And thanks to Elks for hosting us here in the Lodge. And one of the things we like to do is to have a chance for our local elected officials to introduce themselves, so we can give them a little recognition. So any of our local school board members, county commissioners, city councilors, anything of that nature, if you could just kind of put your hand up and introduce yourself to everyone would be helpful.
Brad Wonders, Lake County Commissioner.
Dave Castner, Lake County Commissioner.
Anyone else?
Kate Taylor, Chair.
Cat in the back?
Sandra Wenzel, Town Council. And I'm not elected, but I'm reverend of all the town manager.
All right, very good. And anybody running for office who wants to let people know they're running?
James Williams, running for county commissioner, position 02.
And Bruce Webber also running for county commissioner.
You know, these folks who stand up and for leadership positions in local levels, they undertake all the challenges that they knew about and then all the tough ones that they didn't know about. And so let's show them a little appreciation. And at the start of each town hall, I like to shine a light on a local organization that's doing good things and making a community stronger. And today, we're going to shine that light on the Lane Clifton VFW Post 4070. And I think Dave Swart, the commander, is here, and you have some fellow folks with you. If you're welcome to bring them up. Come on, come on forward. Would you like to share a little bit about what you're doing with the veterans post?
Yeah, my name is Dave Swart. I'm the commander of the local VFW 4070, Lane Clifton Post. With me, I have my chaplain, George Middleton. I have John Forga, who is my second-in-command, and my adjutant, Nate Young. What we basically, our job is basically veteran support, be it a funeral, community action, flags. We have a multitude of objects and things that we do. Our biggest thing is honor guard at funerals. It's an honor for us to do that. They don't have to be a member. All veterans are brothers or sisters. We honor that. And that's pretty much it in a nutshell. I mean, we, families of vets or spouses, we support them, and we do our best to do. And I personally want to thank the Lake County individuals for their help and their support in what we do.
So I think it's just so important for our veterans who have stood up for us overseas to be able to, we can stand up for them. And what you're doing is people, and people call you up and say, I need help with X, Y, or Z. It can be all kinds of different things. And do we have other veterans out in the audience? Maybe you could raise your hand? And thank you all. So just as a way of saying a thank you to you all, and this is a flag for you to use as you find appropriate. I know you do a lot with flags. This happens to be one that has been flown over the US Capitol. Thank you very much. Thank you. So just to, I'm going to mention a few things that are going on, kind of warm up the conversation, and then we'll turn to your questions and comments. The Commissioner has volunteered to mix all those tickets up and call them, so that we can get a chance, for a chance for everyone to make their point. If someone's speaking who you just dramatically, passionately disagree with, please still be respectful of that person, let them have their say, and we'll ask everyone else to do the same. It was your turn. Some of the things that have gone on is we had an omnibus spending bill, and that's just a fancy way of saying a spending bill that covers all sections of the government. And my role in that was as the top Democrat on the agricultural section. And so I was fighting for funding for PILT and secure rural schools, rural broadband, rural energy savings program, rural development, rural water infrastructure, and then a whole host of various agricultural support programs. And that came out pretty well, so I'm pretty happy about that. There were some other pieces in there, for example, FDA is in the ag area and the Food and Drug Administration. And we were able to get funding into that to help take on the opioid epidemic, which is one of the things that has come up in the meeting I just held with some of the community leaders. And, and also, variety of things related to forestry, which I can go into if people have questions about that. Specifically, under SRS, when I had been here previously, folks had said, we really secure rural schools. We really need help getting a flexibility for our Title III funds, which are for emergency response services. There had been an interpretation that the money could only be used for actually responding to an emergency as opposed to preparing to respond. And so I've had a bill for several years I've been trying to get passed. I got it into the omnibus, and now we'll have the flexibility for the previous funds and the funds to come. And so I think for the county here, I think it's about a quarter million dollars that's been locked up. PILT will be worth a little more than a million, and the SRS will be funded, I think, at 95% of the last time it was funded. So that's, that's the lay of the land. Much of last year was spent on two bills. One was to basically change healthcare in ways that we would have lost somewhere between 22 and 30 million Americans off of healthcare. Would have had a huge impact on rural America, because what has happened with the expansion of Medicaid, the Oregon Health Plan, is a lot more people can pay their bills, and so there's more income to our rural clinics and our rural hospitals, and that obviously has made them stronger. And many have been able to expand services into mental health areas and drug addiction areas, which, as well as strengthen the other programs they provide. We have a lot of international issues going on, still dealing with Russia. It's every day, it's something new in that regard. The Syrian war, ethnic cleansing, famines, China, North Korea. So folks are, you know, welcome to ask or make a point on any topic, including those things that we're involved in. We did have a big debate two weeks ago over the War Powers Act, and whether or not the support we're providing to Saudi Arabia in their bombing of Yemen was violating the War Powers Act. I think it is. We did not get a majority who agreed with that, so, but that's, that's a more recent issue, is that, that piece of military involvement in actual combat in places where it has not been authorized by Congress, and the Constitution says it's supposed to be. So that's, that's, that's tough. So with that, let's, let's turn to the questions you all have and points you want to make and...
I'll call it off, and if you could stand and give your next place. First one, I have last three digits, 155.
And I'll have you read several at a time, because a lot of folks took a ticket, but some are too shy to ask a question, and we'll just go rapidly through them.
That was 155, the other is 141. And 104.
Okay, maybe you can start with your name and what part of the county you come from. We'll get a microphone for you.
I'm Angie Albertson, and I'm from Lake County. And the questions I have is, oh, my concern about the forests burning up when that's such a renewable resource. We had such a wonderful economy, and Lake County was just so prosperous. You know, our schools, our roads, our, you know, we got to continue with the way of life that was good for us and the community, and it proved that. So I'm just concerned about why we can't get back in and start harvesting. The main concern is, I know one from a logger's family, and they love the renewable. They love it. It's like taking care of it. They love to see it grow. But yes, they harvest it, and then react like we're al-bas, but the spotted owl thing came around, which we know now wasn't. You know, I mean, it's those kind of things concern me.
Was it Angie?
Yes.
Yeah, thank, thank you. So this has been, a couple of things that, that are changing in that world. One is, we had this problem called fire borrowing, which is every bad firefore season, which we've had almost every year, has been a bad season. The Forest Service had to shut down all its planning for logging sales, which really slowed down making those sales available. So this is something that Greg Walden, Senator Wyden, and I have been very focused on. And in this omnibus, we got an end of fire borrowing that will start in 2020. We didn't run, unfortunately. We weren't able to get it immediately, but it'll go 2020 through 2027, eight years. And hopefully, by then, we'll have the tradition set that we will not, we will stop shutting down the Forest Service preparation for logging sales in order to fight fires. And a second is that there's been a lot of support for being able to do an expanded version of stewardship contracting, which is where we've kept the sales out of the courts. The thinning has made our fire, our forest more fire-resilient, more disease-resistant, and has provided a steady supply of sawlogs. And for example, that's a very important program for Collins Pine, and also for the potential biomass project here in the, in the county. The, I think those are the main recent developments in this effort, but there were also, in the omnibus, there's five changes in forest management practices designed to make it easier to get through the process, so that we get hung up less often.
Does that mean for small, like salvage logging type businesses, those ones, fire weather on the...
So, I'd have to follow up to get you the exact language. I know that there were provisions under consideration for those five items that involved some salvage logging, but I'm not sure exactly how it came out. So if we, let me introduce Amy Amrin to you. Amy, wherever you are, over here. And I, so, do you still have any of your cards?
No.
She's about, she's about to run out. But you can look up her number on our website, call her up, and, and also disconnect with her before you leave today, so we'll try to get back to you before the week's out.
Anybody with the number 099? If I could make a comment? Or 175?
I got mine. Go for it. Yes, sir. Thank you for coming. I'm Chuck Castner. I live in Adele. I'm chairman of the Lakeview Ambulance Service, or the Lakeview Disaster Center. And volunteerism isn't what it used to be, and we made it great when we had lots of volunteers, but now we're going to have to start paying people to, to run on the ambulance. And Critical Access Hospital is, is able to charge 101% of cost. And I was wondering, were we a frontier ambulance service, if there would be any way that you could think of? I know I've talked to Amy and Stacy, and willing to work at legislation, but we need something. Either that, or we're going to have to go to the county and get a tax base, which we're not under now.
So this is the type of challenge that I'll have my team continue working with you on. I don't know if there's models from other parts of the country that could be adopted here in that regard. And so are you, have you found a dramatic reduction in your volunteer base?
Yes.
Well, anyone available to help with the ambulance operation?
It's quite a task, the certification, the training it takes, to be a field ambulance. Quite a number taking, and we've got from anybody that wants to give it a try. We've got to come up with something, or we're going to go away.
And some parts of the state is tied into the local fire unit, but it's not here?
Right.
Okay, okay. Well, it's, let's, let's follow up and see what we can figure out.
Yeah, like I said, I'm willing to do whatever, come back and help work on legislation or something.
Yeah. And I think it's a conversation we should bring the local hospital into and local clinics and so forth, as to how, because you've got to be able to get people, whether they're hurt or really ill, get them quickly to be supported.
Yeah.
Okay.
Anybody have a question? 175?
I'm Shelley Battion from here in Lakeview. For as long as I can, I'm too close to the speaker. Do I even need it? For as long as I've been involved in, interested in politics, we've talked about cutting the deficit, and cutting deficit, cutting deficit. You can't have a good budget because of the deficits. We have this omnibus budget, and it exploded the deficit. How is that fiscally responsible?
Yeah, it's not. And even worse than that, the, the tax bill that passed at the end of last year is borrowing a trillion and a half dollars from our kids and delivering 80% of the, of the, of the funds to the richest Americans. And that's really troubling. The, I don't, nobody has ever come to one of my town halls yet, maybe it'll happen someday, and said the richest Americans need tremendous amount more help. And, but who, who needs more help? Working families need more help, living waste jobs, education, healthcare, costs of housing. Those are kind of the foundations for families to thrive. So the fact that, that I consider it to be a bank heist, what just happened. And there, there is some support for work in America, but it's such a small amount of the total bill, and the bill will increase the cost of healthcare a lot, because it pulls the plug on the national insurance pool, which is estimated to increase healthcare costs premiums by 10% next year and 20% the year after that. And so whatever the gain there is for work in America, we're losing it on the, on the healthcare side. So, and then you throw this omnibus onto it. And I was pretty excited when, at the end of the Clinton administration, we were talking about the fact that we were about to wipe out the national debt. And I thought, what a great gift to the next generation. What a great gift. And then we had a change of administrations, funded, had the Iraq War with no, no financing for it, had the Afghanistan War with no financing for it, and that war's still costing us $45 billion a year, had Medicare Part D with no financing for it, and had a tax bill with no financing for it. Those four things just exploded the deficit. And then we had a big recession at the end of that, 2008 collapse of the economy, driven mostly by the deregulation of the banking business and some very unsavory practices. Hurt a lot of work in America. People who had money actually made money out that recession, because they could buy new assets at, at bottom price, you know, pennies on the dollar. And so it's been a rough go on that, and I'm glad you raised it, because I think it's a big issue.
I'll call out three numbers if you have a number and a question to respond to currently. And then 133?
See, the front row, that's the place to be, I guess.
Yeah. My name's Sandra Watts. I'm a fifth-generation person from this area, but I've lived away from here for a while and just come back from Montana. And my biggest concern in coming back to my home county is that this feeling of hate of the government, just a, an apologetic hate of the government, mistrust of the government. You're in a county, as you know, that 70% voted for Donald Trump.
Here, here.
Yeah. Boo. My, my, and that's, that's the issue. My, my issue is, there is such a divide between the East and the West Oregon. You're from Western Oregon. Wyden's from Western Oregon. We have maybe one representative from Eastern Oregon. Have you ever thought of a way to bridge the divide of people who are shouting, "Hate the government, yay, let's make a new state, let's pull out"? There seems to be no conversation from our leaders to bring us together, because when we talk about it, whether you say yay or nay for Trump, we're all in this together. We're all people from Lake County. We're all people from the, the East Side who feel shunned. We feel that nobody pays attention to us, because we don't have any very many people here. And so we develop this victimization. We hate the government, they're not for us, we've got to get somebody who'll do something for us, and look where we are. So I just wonder if you would be willing, I appreciate your coming to a, to a town hall. It's a long way to come, but that's the problem. And it shouldn't be so long way to come here. We're just like everybody else, we just have some different concerns. Have you found a way to, to try to bridge that gap? To get the Westerners and the Easterners together and say, how are we going to go forward with Oregon?
Well, I'm glad you raised it, because, and I know, you, you frame it as east-west, but it's also rural-urban. And our nation is kind of a nation of blue islands in a sea of, sea of rural red. And this isn't the way it was when I was a kid. I'm from Myrtle Creek, I'm from a very rural, tiny timber town. When the mill was, was shut down overnight, my, my folks had, had bought a home in Myrtle Creek, and suddenly there's no, and the bill was in Riddle, so a couple miles nearby. And boy, it was, that was a real panic for people to, the whole community to kind of lose their jobs all at once. And at that time, it was more, ranchers were a little bit more in the Republican camp, and farmers were a little bit more in the Democratic camp, but it wasn't a rural-urban issue. And I've thought about how this has happened over the course of our lives, that our parties have become oriented in this fashion. And part of it is the social issues, which cities tended to be a little further in one world on social issues than in rural areas. And another is resource issues, where you had different perspectives, and you mentioned, somebody mentioned the spotted owl, I'm not sure if you, you didn't mention it. Someone did. You know, they kind of symbolize the difference in perspectives. One of the reasons I have a town hall in every county every year is to be able to go to all 36 counties. Now, we have 22 counties in our state that are as red as, as the reddest county in Idaho, or reddest county in Montana, or anywhere else, and they may have populations of only a couple thousand people, but I'm there every year. I spend a lot more per capita time in rural Oregon than I do in urban Oregon. And so that gives me a chance to hold a pre-meeting with the city commissioners, have my field team, have any following up with them, so we can work in partnership on a whole host of issues. That's how I approach it. And, you know, it's, one of the reasons I really like being the top Democrat on the ag issue, is I spend a tremendous amount of time on rural agricultural issues, which that's a, you know, that's a different set of issues than you might find in a, in a city. So then it comes to DC, and in DC, it involves spending a lot of time in meetings with colleagues across the aisle. Now, it's gotten more difficult. I think one of the challenges we have is we only have two media worlds. We have the, kind of, it just symbolizes it by Fox News on one end and MSNBC on the other end. And I encourage folks to flip back and forth between those channels, because you'll find the same facts presented so differently, you can't even recognize, recognize it. A couple months ago, I was listening to commentary on CNN or MSNBC that was kind of, the foundation of democracy is our elections, we've got to get to the bottom of Russian interference in our elections. And then I switched over to Fox News, and the subtitle said, "Coup against the President." I'm like, holy smokes, what's going on? And turned up the volume, and the commentary was that the effort to get to the bottom of the Russian interference in election was really an effort to create a coup against our president. And it's like the same facts presented in completely different ways. So I think we have to work to get out of whichever world we're in and have conversations across the aisle, because otherwise, our worldview just gets reinforced by everyone around us, and it's like, I can't even understand the other side, because I never talked to them, I don't, what, what are they thinking? And we have, I think, so we have to struggle with it as citizens, as well as, as leaders best. Some of the things I'm, I'm going to try to, try to address that.
Anybody with the number 187? 186?
A lot of people asked me to come here today to ask a, one specific question, was your position on Initiative 43 and the gun rights here in Oregon.
So this is an initiative that is, that people are putting together for the future ballot? And do you want to just describe for folks the, the main items that are in that?
That is right. It is not currently on the ballot. It has about a little over 3,000 signatures so far. I don't believe those signatures are verified, but...
I think it has to get some like 85,000.
It has, it has to have about 88,000, that's to get onto the ballot. And the initiative talks about banning assault rifles, not just assault rifles, but pistols, any handguns with, that take over 10 rounds, any kind of rifle with a pistol grip. There's a huge, huge, long list of things in the initiative that would be banning, and essentially banning most of the guns I personally own and about everyone in this room probably owns. At least one, one gun is described on this initiative. There are some folks here that have businesses that heavily rely on firearms and the training for people to use firearms. So my question is, where, where you stand on Initiative 43?
So I want, I'm not familiar with the details of 43, but I can discuss some of the different issues that have been raised, and I'm, I'm sure the whole state, should this get on the ballot. I, I've heard there's several different initiatives being circulated, related to guns. But one of the, I'll tell you, in the national discussion, it's, the first topic is background checks. Now, Oregon has closed the background loophole for gun shows and Craigslist sales, and the question being discussed nationally is, should we do this nationally? And should we improve the information that gets put into the database, so we'd have basically a more functional system across America, rather than just individual states doing slightly different versions like Oregon has? So I think it's useful to get your all's feedback. How many folks would support the, kind of, a national background check that looks a lot like Oregon's? How many folks would oppose a national background check that looks like Oregon's? So about evenly split on that. Second piece is enabling the NIH to do research on, on gun violence, to understand the challenges bedded. They've been banned since, I think, 1996, so, what, 22 years from doing research, and we do research on virtually everything else that causes this harm. And so one of the proposals is to start, allow, get rid of that ban and start studying the issue, to try to figure out how different things might work and whether they work. How many folks would support enabling the NIH to, National Institute of Health, to do research on, on gun casualties? And how many folks would be opposed to that? Okay? And then a third piece is the, we did have an assault rifle ban and for 10 years, the sale of new, new weapons. The, and so the main proposal is, should we do that again and should we ban magazines of more than 10 bullets?
No, absolutely not.
No way.
So, let's just let everyone kind of weigh in on that. How many folks would support banning magazines of more than 10 bullets? And how many folks would be opposed to that? Okay, well, that one, you can see there's a lot more difference of opinion. I'm pretty supportive of all three of those items. Background checks like Oregon's system, the proposal to do research, and the proposal to do limits on magazine size. The, what we have seen, I asked my team to go back and look at every massacre where more than six people died, and virtually every single one of those was an assault rifle with a, a magazine of 50 or more bullets.
That's, that's, we talked to FBI website, has the real statistics.
I'm sorry?
The FBI website has the real statistics. Handguns have been the number one used in mass shootings.
And incidentally, even if there were only 10 rounds, I'm just trying to bring it down a little bit, even if you only had 10 rounds, it takes one second to change a mag with any handgun with any amount of training or...
That is, that is a fair point. A person who knows what they're doing, but we have had a number of cases, it's not every case, but a number of cases where folks who have, were using small magazines, they're nervous or they're inexperienced, they have dropped them and they have been interrupted by bystanders.
Then why are we banning them? Why are we banning them?
So this is an issue, this is the type of issue, exactly type of issue, we should wrestle with. And so I appreciate you bringing that up, appreciate the perspective on it. I'm getting a lot of mail on it and probably some of the mail from, from all of you. And I, I think it's something pretty important to wrestle with. We're, more Americans are dying from, from bullets than are dying from car accidents.
No, no, no!
You're watching, man, that's something, something...
I hear a disagreement. Okay? On that point, we may have somebody else who wants to continue that conversation, but let's see what else.
There you go, that's the answer, right there.
Let's continue with question 186. 1?
I'm right here, I'm right here. Hi, my name's Jolene, I live in Michigan. I'm not sure I want to follow that. My concern, both in my personal life and my professional life, is what's going on with our veterans in rural areas and their access to healthcare, specifically inpatient facilities, post-acute care. In my professional career, I spent the better part of the last two days just trying to find one bed for a very desperate gentleman in need of care that deserves that, and I have been given the runaround over and over and over again. It's not just so much not the access of, but the failing system, the C-BAC is not working. They're being given multiple care providers. I have one gentleman who has seen four care providers in the last two years, never seen a care provider twice because the doctors are just flat. We have two C-BAC facilities that do not have a doctor and are not operating even though they're brand new facilities. And my biggest concern is honestly the mental health issues. They aren't being treated, they aren't being cared for, and it's sending a message to our veterans that they aren't important. It's trickling down to rural communities and community partners, and we're being told, "We can't help you," or "That's Portland's problem," or "That's Seattle's problem," or "That's Brad's Pass's problem." Two days I've spent on the phone for one veteran, "I just need one bed," and I can't get it. I've lived this in my personal life, being married to a disabled veteran, personally had to walk him in the front door of an ER facility and tell him, "Take him or I'll call my congressman." That's how I got something done, and that's not fair.
Good for you, good job!
So I have a member of my team who does nothing but work on trying to solve problems for veterans. And Lord knows, they've stood up for us overseas, and we need to stand up for them. We've had a host of issues related to travel expenses, related to access to facilities, related to the Roseburg facility and trying to keep the full range of services there. There is a, a, a challenge in the program in which if you're more than a certain distance away or waiting time of more than X, you should be able to, to apply to local care. That has been very rough on the implementation, and quite frankly, I have veterans weighing in on both sides of the issue. Some are saying they really want that, and some are afraid that it will start unraveling the veterans' overall system. And I, you're kind of weighing in on the second half of that?
Yeah, I feel like what's happened is they're getting really great care. We have a local clinic here that's working very well with our beds, but when it comes down to acute care, it actually isolates them from their ability to walk into a VA facility and get that long-term care. Also, they're very limited in their prescription availability. And honestly, I've felt, I've heard frustration from colleagues that I work with in the hospital that are saying, you know, "We're trying to work with the VA, but we can't get these prescriptions filled, we can't get them huron timed, they're very difficult to deal with." So the issue for me is more not that the services aren't available, it's nobody seems to know where they are and how to get to them, not even the people answering the phones.
Yeah, no, and one of the things that's happened that I have heard from a number of vets about, I'm not sure statistically how, how big a deal it is, but is that once you start using the private facilities, then it becomes a confusing process of who's paying for this? Is it X insurance A or insurance B or the Veterans Administration? Will we get reimbursed on time? How much will we get reimbursed? Like, the system hasn't been set up for that piece and it's, we're having trouble. Well, I would love to connect you with Kelly on my team. And because you're bringing a lot of insight to the, the challenges and, like, people keep coming up to me, veterans, and saying that we were able to help with various issues they're in, but this is a systematic challenge, plus the, the money that needs to go in to get rid of the waiting lists of, of veterans who have been waiting for determination of their status, et cetera.
Can you just, just real quickly, like, and I know that in Roseburg, they just recently opened a post-acute care wing that is specifically for veterans that have been in acute care and now need to transition out. It was open with somewhere between 28 and 35 beds, I've gotten mixed numbers. It's now operating at 16 beds with no availability. They are actually housing drug and alcohol patients there because they need to be transferred to drug and alcohol care, but there's no availability there. Why are we not utilizing the beds that were provided by people who wanted to pay into that system?
So I've had the, the Roseburg vets and the Roseburg team filling me in, and, but this point you're raising was not one of the points I raised, so I'm going to have to, I'll have to look into that piece.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
You're welcome.
So just for a second, Jolene, have you talked to Charlie Pike?
Oh, yeah, lots. We're both working on it, thank you.
Anybody with 101 that has a question? 185?
Thank you, Senator, for coming. Actually, I visited your DC office last summer. Ally and me were marvelous, you were gone. All the senators were gone, it was after the last attempt to repeal of the Affordable Care Act. Washington's a beautiful city, I'm really proud of our capital. Gosh, I wasn't going to talk about guns, but you know, today, I, I'm killing it every day, there's something horrific. Fifty years ago, I was living in Bellevue, Washington, right next to the country club. I was looking up in the middle of the night with a gun, being hit over the head with a gun, and a gun held to my temple with a pillow over my face. Well, I survived. Adrenaline kicked in and I kept it together. I, I just, I've never had a gun, I never want a gun. I think guns are for pussies, to put it bluntly. I'm just tired of this, I'm just tired of this. How many kids have to die?
How many kids need to defend themselves? These people in this town have the right to defend themselves, so I'm just going to try and take a gun?
Yeah!
A bullet from AR-15 smashed into any organ that it comes in contact with and yet the wound is...
So does a hammer!
And you know that because... So, so folks, I just want to remind, kind of, the basic principles that let us be able to have these discussions is, you passionately disagree, that's when you try to be very respectful to the person so that everyone else, the same social contract when, when your turn's up.
Thank you, I refuse to lose my life in fear. Thank you, Senator.
Then, no, get a gun!
Thank you.
Let's do, be respectful. To put it out, I have more guns than I have windows in my house, but I appreciate people who don't like guns also, so it's a two-way street.
Hey, Ken? I'm 185.
185? Okay.
Hi, my name is Tucker Ferber, and I've been living in Lake County since mid-'80s. And I just want to let you know, there is a national background check, the FBI does it for free, but each state, when they came out with the national background check, each state took it upon themselves to do their own. And when they did that, that's when it went into disarray. So the information, whether it be mental health or criminal history through LEDs, is in disarray. So everything's there established, but nobody's come together to put that together for the FBI. So it's there, we don't need anything extra, you know, added to it. The information needs to be implemented and applied to the FBI and let them do the federal background check.
Yeah, absolutely, it's the simple way.
And, you know, a lot of people are all upset about school shootings and this and that, and has any, anyone ever been in one? I have, I have. And I saved an officer's life, used his gun to save his life.
Good job.
Because I'm not afraid.
Good job.
I'm not afraid. And so, you know, it's, his gun saved his life, but I used it. And, you know, it's, you know, people here are willing to defend themselves, and I've been through active shooter training with some of the officers here. Four times I've been through active shooter training, so I'm one of the ones would volunteer to go into a school and risk my life for your kids' lives.
Thank you, Tucker.
Thank you.
I just want you to know, there already is the FBI national background check.
Yes, there is, thank you.
Anybody with number 147 with a question?
I don't have a question, I just want to say, people kill other people, it's not the guns.
Thank you.
Thank you.
149?
My name's Andrew Rucker. I moved here with my wife about seven years ago. I grew up in Wasilla, Alaska. And if you don't own a gun, you're going to get eaten.
That's right.
So, I'm obviously pro-gun, but I know that since the beginning of creation, there was man that killed man, didn't he? And ma'am, I'm very sorry if someone broke into your house and stuck a gun to your head.
Right.
It could have been a hammer, it could have been a pipe, it could have been something else. But I'm just saying that it's, it's mankind that needs the help, it's not gun control. It's the humans that need help. It's the individuals in schools at the local service, in other communities that are reaching out for help and they're not getting it. And they are the ones that need the help, not the people who are responsible, who have guns, who have the background check, who took the hunter safety courses and are following the rules.
Absolutely.
Don't steal my amendment.
Thank you. That's right.
And so, I mean, the part of the question is the Second Amendment, personal ability to, to own weapons.
Yes, it is.
But it's statutory, what defines exactly what is within that? And for example, we don't allow people to have hand grenades, we don't allow people to have bazookas. And so that's, that's been part of the debate over the question of the types of bullets, the, the plastic handguns that were an issue some 15 years ago, et cetera. And so that, that conversation's going to, to continue. But you raised another piece of it, which is the ability to get help to people who are troubled. And part of the question that Oregon wrestled with in its initiatives, on its background check discussion, was, is there a way to try to essentially say that we want to be able to protect the Second Amendment, but for folks who have created felonies, folks who are stalking, and folks who are deeply disturbed, to avoid having them using weapons in those situations? And so that's been a piece of the conversation. And, and another piece has been school counselors and the funding for schools for those with training to assist disturbed students. And there's, you know, we often have fractured families in difficult circumstances and, and a certain number of individuals are going to be wrestling with some demons. And those folks, how do we get them help? So that's a, that's a certainly important part...
It's on your plate.
Yeah, important part of the problem, absolutely, thank you.
We're getting close, and there's a lot of tickets yet to add. I'll take the next number at 907. Does anyone have that number with a question?
097?
Yeah. 097.
That's me.
I'd like to thank you for having me today, I've never been to one of these meetings before, but built on the separation between east and west are rural in there, I think you're taking a step in the right direction. I got to say that I'm a little dismayed, I get your emails and that, and the bipartisanship in Washington DC, I think if that was one way it would go somewhat to bridge in that gap. Your newsletters are playing to your base or whatever you have to do, and I understand that, but my question is, if it was up to me, I'd get rid of Nancy Pelosi, God, shoot.
Thank you!
I think it's close to go, quit playing the bipartisan stuff and get something done. But I guess I would just ask, can you step up and support some of the vacancies, whether it's ambassadors, the Trump appointees that need them, and put the US first and not the Democratic Party's?
Glad you raised the nominations, I've been putting forward a proposal that says basically from the time that people complete their paperwork, there should be a 100-day clock, and at the end of that clock, if they haven't gotten a vote on the floor, then the issue, quote, "ripenes," that's the term they use for something that's automatically been considered on the floor, so that folks aren't in the pipeline forever. And just last week, I've been, I've been soliciting different colleagues across the aisles, saying, "Is this something that could be a bipartisan solution?" Because advice and consent was never meant to be warfare against the president. Now, both minorities have used this as a weapon. My Republican colleagues in the minority used it as a weapon against President Obama.
Yep, absolutely.
Democrats, if we're walking some, although there's...
Two wrongs, don't we?
Yeah. And there's also, interestingly enough, there's a whole lot of holes by Republicans on nominees from the administration. In fact, it was not one to go that one of them, I think it was Senator Corker, put a hold on an entire department for any nominees to be considered because he had an argument with the president over, over something. But this, this needs to change, and so I'm, I'm excited that after two years of trying to get someone to join me in bipartisan effort to fix this executive nominee strategy, I've got a, I've got a, it's like, I've got a tug on the fishing line, and, and so stay tuned.
We have about six minutes till 6:30, which is about time. I think Jeff will stay a little bit longer to interact. So just a few more questions. 150?
Right here.
Yep.
There's a lot of things I'm concerned about. One is one that, it's kind of tied into guns as far as I'm concerned, but, and that's is sanctuary city, Bo, BS. And when I first heard about sanctuary cities, I couldn't friggin' believe it wasn't some second grade... grader, but it turns out it's Democrats in California. And then it's filtering up here in Oregon, I mean, sanctuary cities, seriously? I mean, all the more reason that we need a gun, because of sanctuary cities. Because how you can support illegal aliens that are criminals is beyond me, so I'd like to hear you say something.
Oh, you're good, I'd be glad to. First of all, the word sanctuary city doesn't have a foundation in the law.
Yes, sir.
But I can tell you, but I can tell you what I keep hearing from sheriffs and police officers. They said, if we have to turn our force into doing the responsibilities of ICE, we get no cooperation from the community, and crime goes up.
No. That's not true.
And this may be something that is different in your part of the state, but I'm just telling you, at gathering after gathering, I've had the police chiefs come to me, I've had sheriffs come to me, and say, if we're asked to execute ICE functions, cooperation with the community takes a deep dive, much harder to solve crimes. And so that has been the question. The term, most of the time, people use the term sanctuary city, they're talking about whether the federal government can compel the local police to do ICE functions, and so...
It's not asking to do this, it's simply asking to report it.
That is another piece of it, but some include that, some don't include that. So that's the basic disagreement that's occurring between the police and sheriffs and ICE.
So the Orange County just joined Jeff Sessions' lawsuit against California because they can't stand it anymore, they're overrun with it.
Which county?
Orange.
They just joined it, and these others coming, so what you're saying is not true.
And so, listen, when it goes in the courts, then they got to figure it out, and maybe we'll get a definition of what sanctuary city is, and we'll have these issues aired.
Why should we get a definition when it isn't part of the law?
Well, so, it's not part of federal law, however, it is part of what different cities have adopted in terms of local law, as to whether their police or their sheriffs are going to perform ICE functions. And so in that sense, it isn't standing, it doesn't have a federal definition, but it has a local definition, which varies from town to town to town. And so I don't know the details of the lawsuit in California, but I think the basic question in the past has been immigration is a federal responsibility, and to what degree can local areas take action that either affects it, and in a positive way or a negative way, and that gets right down into the fine print details of what an individual jurisdiction has...
It's a crime.
Why did the Obama administration sue the state of Arizona for enforcing federal law? Get all those bandit hands with that.
If they catch a major drug dealer, they have a choice.
Well, no, but I mean, the Obama administration sued Arizona for enforcing federal law. I can figure that one out.
Yeah.
Any more than I can figure out sanctuary cities.
Because that is the same core issue of the division between federal responsibilities and what states can do. And it's, you know, if you take a parallel situation in commerce, there's the interstate commerce clause, and we can do some things to change commerce, for example, when we had the Oregon bottle bill, we changed commerce, and it got challenged. And the court said, no, that's a legitimate local decision, doesn't really hurt interstate commerce. It's the same tension between the federal and the local that's being figured out on this front.
Not being uniformly applied.
Bottles aren't criminals.
Senator Markey, he'll be on the road in a few minutes, so I'll take one more question. Clint Smith.
Yes, yes, yes. Yes, I'm right here.
Thank you, sir, for coming. My name is Clint Smith, I don't need a microphone. I have a small place called Thunder Ranch, we have a shooting school here in Lake County. We bring about $900,000 a year into the county. Everybody who comes has a criminal background check, and so I have a couple of questions that I would just like have you ponder, please. I know that at one time you stood with your foot in yellow footprints, so to speak, and swore to uphold the Constitution of the United States.
Thank you.
I also know that there's the east and west divide. I also know that the 21 policemen who died this year were not pussies, okay? So I would ask that you at least consider us, I know there's not very many of us, but if you'd at least look at what we're trying to do and understand, we're in a little bit different situation than Grants Pass or Portland, and so if you would at least consider the Constitution, the orthus war to protect, I think that includes the Bill of Amendments, okay? Bill of Rights, so if you would do that, I would really appreciate it, so it was just more of a comment. I very sincerely appreciate you coming, because most people won't step into a pool of alligators willingly, so you have, you know, my thought and my regard on that. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Clint.
I'm just, Ken, have one question. It's not, no way around it, I'm that issue. You're in DC, we're here in Oregon, you're our representative, you're our senator, okay, whatever I can, because I call your office every so often. What do you want, what can we do as a citizen of the United States, as a citizen of Oregon, to help you do your job better?
Open it up.
You get, if you get a phone call, twenty-five phone calls coming, and I'll go, and I'm hoping, and you'll get twenty-five phone calls on an issue, just let us know where you need help, and we'll get it to you.
Well, thank you, appreciate that offer. The, so, thank goodness I don't live in DC, I get out of there every weekend, and my soul would be destroyed by that place. Got to get back home and recharge batteries, really go back into the fight. So to reframe that a little bit, folks say, what's the most effective way to communicate? And, well, just to get a picture of this, we, back when I was an intern for Senator Hatfield, I was assigned going in an hour early, open all the mail for the day, get it distributed to the different four specialists who would respond to letters, they would type out the letters, by the end of the day, everything would be mailed. All right, well, that's, that was 500 letters a week. We get somewhere on average about 14,000 letters a week down there. It is a huge number. And a lot of them are people clicking on boxes on the internet, and so you get cold movements, you make it a thousand of the same thing. The more time and effort it takes, the more effective the communication is, in general. In other words, people who write personal letters require the team to personally wrestle with how that letter, how can we get an answer? We try to get a substantive answer to every single letter. Don't always succeed, sometimes we make mistakes, we have a whole crew of interns just to read those 14,000 letters and try to get it right. I go through and read all the new topics that have come in, I also go through a daily phone log of all the issues that have been called on in the office. But the most effective thing, I mean, this is what we're engaging in here right now, we're talking about personal stories, personal opinions, face-to-face conversation, this is the single most effective way to have an issue. And then if there's an issue you want to follow up on, most effective thing you can do is call Amy. And Amy can get in contact with any member of my team working on an issue, they can get me on the phone, it's a whole host of ways to be able to respond. But I think the more personal the communication is, the more significant and effective it is. I'll just close by saying that this is a great turnout, and it's a turnout that demonstrates the fact that citizens are engaged, and that engagement often comes from being angry about an issue, and the most difficult issue conversation we're having right now, obviously, is the issue of gun safety and background checks and magazines and so forth. And so that's an important reason for me to be out here listening to you all and pondering. So thank you for the feedback, thank you for showing up. My big concern is that the basic element of our Constitution, the basic foundation, is being turned on its head. Let me explain what I mean. Our Constitution starts out with those three words, "we, the people." And it was constructed to be the opposite of government buying for the powerful. In fact, Jefferson said that the fundamental nature of the goal was that we wouldn't have decisions that reflect the will of the people unless each citizen had an equal voice. He called it the mother principle of our democracy. But we have Citizens United. Citizens United is the opposite of Jefferson's mother principle. It says that the wealthiest among us, the billionaires, can spend hundreds of millions of dollars in campaigns, often drowning out the voice of ordinary people. So why did we have half the last year spent on a health bill that was designed to eliminate healthcare for 22 to 30 million people, and the other half of the year spent...
It cost the rest of us.
And the other half of the year on a tax bill that proceeded to borrow a trillion and a half dollars from our children and give most of it to wealthiest Americans.
It is immoral to take something that doesn't belong to you and give to someone else.
So I'll just say that that is a reflection of government that buy for the powerful and privileged, rather than buy and for the people, and we need to, I think we need to really get this massive money out of our campaigns, so we have campaigns that are much more about dialogue with ordinary people, about ordinary issues in our communities, and that will help us back on track as a nation. And thank you all for coming, and it's good to see you.